Good morning, welcome to the July 9th, 2019 public hearing of the New York City National Preservation Commission. I'll call it all. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Glenn. Commissioner Barry. Commissioner Tink.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Dolman.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Lattke.
Here.
Commissioner Allprenzmann.
Here.
Alright, good morning, Commissioners. We're to start today's Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda with Item Number One. This is LPC 19-38135, an application per certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1918, Lot 39, 160 Woolley Avenue in the Central and Store District. The address is South Road House, attributed to the owner's pill and built so badly to be destroyed. The application is to create combined base reopenings excavate the side yard and stall fence walkway, staircase, and HPAC units.
Good morning, Commissioner. Michelle Carrion, Preservation Staff. This application is for the 1916 Woolley Avenue, which is located on the southwest corner of Woolley Avenue and Hall Street in the Central and Store District. This proposal is to create a combined base reopening at the side, rear facade, stall fence, walkway, rear yard, and stall skylights at the areaway and garage. Staff would like to note that certain work included in the presentation will be reviewed at the staff level, including insulation of BAC units at the roof and light bulbs in the side yard. That will commence here to discuss the proposal in detail and answer your questions.
Good morning, Jerry Smith, Commissioner. What's the Woolley Avenue, a three-story, based on the South Road House, with a single storage unit garage located in southwest corner of Woolley Avenue and Hall Street in the East Manhattan Square? Grand Institute and Sculpture Garden is located directly across Hall Street to the east. Sixteen-story Woolley block apartment building is located on the northeast corner of Woolley and Hall, and a four-story apartment building is directly across the street of Woolley on the northwest corner. Woolley Avenue between Washington and Clinton Street is a typical rowhouse block with the four-story apartment building located on the west corner of the Hall Street block between Woolley and the town is a typical block. It consists of primarily heritage houses that used to serve Washington Avenue, as well as Sunday School buildings and council residential buildings. The existing rowhouse, 160 Woolley, is sixteen foot wide by forty six feet deep. It sits on a sixteen-foot wide, deep corner block. There's an existing two-car, single-story garage approximately twenty-three feet wide, which leaves approximately seventy foot by sixteen foot wide exterior space, which is located in the rowhouse here. As part of this proposed renovation, there's a pre-large restoration effort at the staff level, which includes returning the existing basement open here, which has a solid back porch original double home side-by-side opening, as well as restoring glass transims that used to exist above the garage room. Is this the existing condition of 160 Woolley now? You can see that that's the original previously. The two-story brick garage in the rear was built approximately in 1920. As Michelle mentioned, the main house was built approximately in 1880. Here's the existing brick facade in the garage in its current condition. At some point post-1980, there was a extended base repair thing down to the floor, added an access stair down, created a terrace on top of the garage. From the front terrace back up, this is the little interstitial outdoor space separated between the rowhouse and the garage. One of the main reasons why I bought the house was approximately the Sculpture Garden had a crab, and it's very lovely to be in the same as it was when I bought it. This is the view from the terrace and the Sculpture Garden. There are also shops showing the building, Sculpture Garden, building adjacent to Woolley on Hall Street. Further context, photos of Hall Street and its unique character. You can see this is Washington Street, right on the park there. These are the heritage houses that serve Washington Street, Sunday School buildings that serve Church of Washington Street. So it's a quirky block, just a little playful nature of some of it. Basically, it's a law of Hall Street. It's a kind of the condition, and the majority of our proposals or interventions happen on Hall Street, so it's more of a residential aspect. Not necessarily Woolley as their name. Moving on to the elements. There are five elements, four represented in this record. The first element are additional window openings on the second floor, basically aligned with the existing window above and would be adjacent with the rest of the bay. We're proposing a new water interpretation at the four-year-old floor at the first floor level, which is a lot more than a standard sheet. The second element is a new pegged steel slab wall that separates the rowhouse from the garage. We're removing the existing new wall, taking it down the height of the wall, aligned with the underside of the ground so horizontal, which also aligns with the new transient windows and the story front door. The third element is reminding, we're removing the existing air off the floor level, returning the still back porch to historic condition. We've enlarged the exterior on the first floor, as well as the basement floor, a minor degree of double home window opening, heightened from the left side of this, to the right side of that hallway there. Deck becomes steel and glass,推开the doors with the wall, maintaining a horizontal line, vertical line within, as well as a horizontal existing gate. This two-story openings allows for additional light into the space behind, as well as establishing a connection, new connection to the garage, to the terrace. The fourth element is the new deck and break-ins, accelerating closure of the garage to minimize sightlines in the building. We're relocating the restructure of the block, dropping it down to about drop the railing down below the coping height. We're proposing by lowering this ceiling height in this area. We're proposing a large skylight that brings light to the second half of the block, to the few users that can work, student, or for their clients. So railing just behind the parrot pit, and then it comes on this stair, and then the whole door leads up to the two-story opening. Consisting in the elevation of Hall Street facade over the steel wall, changing fence the stair down, the rain is existing, we put it over the ceiling. So here you can see that we're allowing the technical opening, the floor above, the adjacent angle bay. The new memorial window is essentially, it has two angles to it, the short angle, which mirrors an angle like the Burke Bay, yeah, Burke angle bay. And then the longer angle comes back and meets with the existing brick facade. And so this is approximately a single window width, and then this is approximately that every time it comes back. The intermediate volume is aligned with the edge of the floor above. Here's our pegged steel slab wall, showing the alignments for the rock on the panel and the last track above. There will be an accessible within this wall as well, but it's hidden, trying to minimize as much as possible, and we can do that by how we play with these sides of the opening with the pegged steel slabs. This is the railing and steps at second back, towards the west side, with three steps up toward the wood terrace. Here's a railing, and here's where our two satellites feature space from. This is the bay window that I've referred to, the short angle that matches the angle like the existing Bay, angle Burke Bay there. Here's where the pegged steel slab walls is, here's where the pegged steel walkway, stairs are up to the roof deck, the new board glass skylight monitor. Just some details of that memorial window, which we can back here. Woolley, just one right now. It essentially starts, these are flat panels that are air from parallel to the existing brick on that side. They're set back one inch from the existing brick, so you can read that return of the face of the opening. These horizontals come out to this point with the steel window, fixed window set back, these three inches back from the steel base. And the largest point here, it sits at 135, seventy inches passing through. Here's, just so we tell them what that pegged steel slab wall is. It's a place that a half-inch by one inch pegged steel arista material that's passed into a steel plate behind. We set the steel plate portions back an inch from the adjacent brick of the rowhouse, aligning the face of the slab to that, so you at least can read the return of the face of that in this condition. So maybe mind the pegged steel slab, this is, I think it makes reference to a lot of the existing fire fences, a lot of the fire statement, around the district. So here's some context photos of modern interventions and historic fabric. These three happen to be, these two are within this district, who's right on the corner at Washington Avenue and Woolley. This was a new addition to the existing rowhouse. This is a couple of elements on the backside of Washington Avenue, a waverly place. This is not in the district, but it's a landmark itself, and that's the intervention of the modern intervention from my day. I'm sure this is, this gave our inspiration for the idea of that memorial window. We had previously, I think we previously had a different, more simplified, minimalist memorial design at Community Board based on feedback from Community Board, as well as from the council staff. We revisited the memorial window, and it's woolly. These are three examples of memorial windows within the district. This one in particular, I think is interesting because it has a very similar existing Burke Bay with an memorial window kind of adjacent to it. Clear facade, understanding what we're doing with the new two-story opening, enlarging one side of the existing double home windows to the other side. This is our bridge and our railing that connect the garage. Two building sections that show that relationship. You know, the idea with all of, the majority of the interventions that we're doing is to allow additional views out to Hall Street, to the Sculpture Garden, as well as bringing in additional light into those relatively narrow sixteen-foot-wide rowhouse. The fifth element, kind of final element that we're proposing is on the existing hatch that faces Woolley. We're removing the existing hatch door, giving a flush structural blast placed over that to try to bring in additional light into this cellar. These are the two new window wells that we're working with staff back up as well. Here's the hatch that's been repurposed during the structural flush place. The rest has to do with HPAC units and the rest of the rest of the rent.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So very thorough presentation, so thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? I think we have an email from Brooklyn Community Board, too, saying that the Community Board approves the application, and on the condition that the proposed window and the parlor floor on Hall Street facade match and be aligned with the existing window on the third floor, as is proposed for the second floor. Would you like to speak to those comments from the Community Board?
Yeah. So, I'm trying to find picture, yeah. Should I go with the last slot of what it was, or no?
The elevation should be helpful.
Of what it was previously. Should we go to the top? Okay. So, this is the memorial window that we were the Community Board with. And the idea with that was just that we were going to do a punch opening, protect it out, and it just sort of soft, it was sheathed in a steel plate around the four sides, and it had a larger modest reference to Sculpture Garden, the steel plate material that's used in the Sculpture Garden. So, this is what we came back to, to do back to the areas. And then, so, instead of just, I think one of the problems with the Community Board was, we would, we would have drew the double home window on the second, on the first floor level, that aligned with that before. But mainly with us that it was, here's a sort of context, and having this kind of larger memorial window adjacent, especially adjacent to that existing Burke Bay, it is a parlor floor, it's a grand patterned floor. That's what we looked at, kind of taking a central proportion of what we had previously, looking to articulate it. I think intention is, it still had to be a modern intervention. By doing it to, I will be trying to recreate a sculptural door opening. This is what we were discussing.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion to put the hearing on paper?
Alright.
So, discussion.
Sure. Ninety percent of the way there. I think that most of this work is completely appropriate. The work we're doing on the Parrot House is terrific. Getting rid of the stairway in the back of the brick facade is fine. The modern intervention of the first-floor window on the rear facade is perfectly fine. Even the addition of new windows on the street side, on the road side, is perfectly fine. My issue is with the design of the memorial window, which is to say, I don't mind putting one there. That's perfectly okay. And there are, you know, a hundred different ways you could do an memorial window that would fit them alike they want, that would be more appropriate to the style of the building. And I'm sure that the work with staff will figure that out. As you can see, the one that shows is the only example they have of that, is a building that is completely different from this one. The modern, the modernist intervention on the rear side, this is a street facade, this
So something that references the historic.
I want to have a good identification, size, alignment, but it should be a somewhat more.
And might that be in the detailing, or and/or window sash configuration?
I think it's the, well, all I can say, as, you know, part of the design, talking about two angles, and I don't see that happening at the typically free.
Please have.
And then, so, our job has so many things to do with that, that's really important.
How others feel? Michael.
Yes.
Others?
You know, in the context of Austin, the album did show that there are, it's a very streetscape, the Parrot House is an institutional building. And I think collectively, all of the changes actually are a big improvement of the building to so Johnny, it's great to get rid of that stair in the back and replace that ceiling wall with something, a material and design that's more appropriate. So I think, you know, I can support a contemporary innovation that's made up here in this context.
The context, too, as you said, it would be, within the context of the street, it just keeps all of the charm, that's true. So, it just has a wonderful character to it. I think it gives you a little bit of the light in terms of what we do on that street, and the windows and stuff. And I also want to say that the, you know, your approach and your thought and process behind it has been really wonderfully filled out, with a lot of detail that we're making not huge, but they really add to the building and the rowhouse, the show that back in a kind of subtle, in a wonderful way. I think it's a great addition to the whole answer.
And I do think that the detailing, I think it was helpful that you went through the detailing, and I think that the detailing was handled very beautifully. Were it not, I might not feel the same about this contemporary day with the first floor. So, while it's contemporary, it's a hyper-level, and it's looking forward. Diana, are you comfortable with it?
I'm generally, I mean, in general, I'm a little bit of a cross, but I don't know. It's kind of, it's kind of thinking about the issue of this being a single window, you know, if you're going to go with a modern, modern reference, some of the store business direction, or if you're not going to do some other practical, you can just see a window that's a same, with the same frame. But I think that is, I don't, I mean, the general approach in the property, it looks like a classic, you know, many practices.
So, yes, so, yeah. In the matter of document 19-38135, 160 Woolley Avenue in the Central and Store District, meaning Burke South Road House, attributed to Anson Hill in 1880. The application is to create a combined base reopening excavate at the side yard and stall fence walkway, skylights, and HPAC units. I know that building's scotch scale materials and details are one of the features that contributed to the special architectural and historic character of the four-grade historic district. I recommend approval filing, that a proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant features of the building, that a proposed memorial window will be a modern interpretation of a traditional feature found throughout the historic district. Helps provide articulation that the facade relates to discreet contemporary features found in the surrounding streets. That a proposed window on the second floor of the east facade will be keeping with the penetration pattern of this facade. That the proposed skylight in the areaway will be installed flush with the existing hatch curb, allowing it to remain discreet presence at the areaway. That the materiality of the proposed skylight at the garage, featuring red brown finished wood plating, will help fit to plan with the context of brick grid apartment facades at this road. That the modified, easily opened, that brick facade will only be limited in amount of plain brickwork and will not exchange due to altered character or solid wood ratio of the secondary facade. That the renewal of a modern concrete basing in the wall, metal door, chandelier fencing, metal stirrups will eliminate constant aesthetic alterations. That the proposed steel slab fence and door will be simple in design and will not detract from the character of the main house or the garage. That the proposed walkway, featuring black finish metalwork, will be keeping with utilitarian depth and purchase typically found in buildings of this type, style, and age throughout the historic district, and will be homogenous with other black finish metalwork at the building. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building of the historic district. On paper? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next item is number two, LPC 19-39039, an application per certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Brooklyn, Block 285, Lot 75, 221 Avenue and Cobbled Road Store District. Commercial residential building designed by P.A.S.A. Architects in 2012. The application is to install signage.
Good morning, Commissioner. Zachary Burlock, Preservation Staff. This application is to install vinyl film at one called Atlantic Avenue, which is located on southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue and Henry Street in the Cobbled Road Store District. So the application for you to apply is translucent vinyl film at the display windows along Atlantic Avenue and Henry Street, as you see here in this plan, the plastic Harris Henry, as part of the use of the space as preschool. The height of the film will vary from sixteen to eighteen, as the sidewalk slips down on Atlantic, and as it slips down where on Henry Street. So the commission notes allows for a maximum of four feet above the sidewalk on half of the display window, whichever is smaller. So as this proposal will exceed both, height and display windows for most of them, those does require full permission review. So if you have any questions, the application is here to answer them. And they did provide a sample of the transistive film, some Asian material, which is a model one.
Okay, any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board, since we're making a approval. If there are no questions, one motion to the hearing. Okay. So the spastic hood, obscuring the transparency of the window after a certain amount of where you want to explain sort of the reasoning behind that. I think it was really thought about for either signage, or dress found uses where you're concealing, on the utilitarian or prestige, right?
Yeah, exactly. So the idea was to still always maintain a level of transparency in how the space was allowed for some privacy installations. There's also signage rules, allowed to calc signage, and sometimes those two things are
...of the oriental window, which is to say, "I don't mind putting one there." That's perfectly okay. And there are, you know, a hundred different ways you could do an oriental window that would fit them alike they want, that would be more appropriate to the, to the style of the building. And I'm sure that the work and staff will figure that out. As you can see, the one that shows is the only example they have of that. It's a building that is completely different. But it has a modern, a modernist dimension on the rear. This is a street facade, this building.
So something that references the historic.
I want to have it fit more. The orientation, the size, the light, but it should be a little somewhat more.
And might that be in the detailing or and/or window sash configuration?
I think it's the, well, all I can say is as, you know, part of the design, we're talking about two angles. And I don't see that happening at the typically free.
Please have.
And so, John, I have so many things to do with that. I'm sure it's important.
How others feel? Michael. Others?
You know, in the context of Austin, the documents that show that there are, it's a very streetscape, a characterizing, an institutional building. And I think collectively, all of the changes actually are a big improvement of the building. So, John, it's great to get rid of that stare in the back and just replace that scene. We walk on something material and designed that's more appropriate. So I think, you know, I can support a contemporary orientation that's made up here in this context.
The context too, as you said, it would be within the context of a street that just keeps on changing. That's true. So it just has a wonderful character to it. I think it gives you a little bit of a new way in terms of what we do on that street. And the windows and stuff. And I also want to say that the, the, you know, your approach and your thought and process behind it has been really wonderfully filled out with a lot of detail that we're making. It's not huge, but they really add to the building and the rock of the show back in a kind of subtle, in a wonderful way. I think it's a great addition to the whole street.
And I do think that the detailing, I think it was helpful that you went through the detailing. I think that the detailing is handled very beautifully. Were it not, I might not feel the same about this contemporary day with this stuff. While it's contemporary, it's a hyper level that is looking forward. Diana, are you comfortable with it?
I'm generally, I mean, in general, I think, you know, I'm just trying to get back there. There's some comments that we have. I was kind of thinking about the issue of this being a single window. You know, if you're going to go with a modern, modern reference, some sort of direction. Or if you're not going to do something other than protecting, you could just see a window that's a same frame. But I think that is, I don't, I mean, the general approach in the property, they have something. Looks like a classic.
In the matter of document nineteen dash three eight one three five one sixteen, Hillley Avenue, in Hillley Store District, meaning for itself, well, it was attributed to Anson Hiller in eighteen eighty. The application is to create from my ways to reopenings and excavate at the side yard and install vents, walkways, skylights, and H D A C units. I note that the building's sound scale, materials, and details are one of the features that contributed to the special architectural and historic character of the four green historic district. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant features of the building, that a proposed oriental window will be a modern interpretation of a traditional feature found throughout the historic district. Helps provide articulation that the facade relates to discreet contemporary features found in the surrounding streets. That the proposed window on the second floor of the east facade will be keeping with the penetration pattern of this facade. That the proposed skylight in the areaway will be installed flush with the existing hatch curb, allowing it to remain discreet presence at the areaway. That the materiality of the proposed skylight at the garage, featuring red brown finish with plating, will help its plans with the context of brick griffon art facades at this road. That the mod, modified, easily opening that brick facade will only need a limited amount of plain brickwork and will not exchange due to altered character or solid border ratio of the secondary facade. That the renewal of a modern concrete basing in their wall, metal door, chailing fence, and metal stirrups will eliminate constant athletic alterations. That the proposed steel slab fence and door will be simple in design and will not detract from the character of the main house or the garage. That the proposed walkway, featuring black finish metalwork, will be keeping with utilitarian depth and purchase typically found in buildings of this type style and age throughout the historic district and will be reminiscent with other black finish metalwork at the building. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building of the historic district.
Call of favor. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next item is number two, L P C one nine dash three nine zero three nine. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block two eighty-five, block seventy-five, twenty-two, one twelve Atlantic Avenue and Cobbler Road, Store District. Commercial residential building designed by P K S A Architects in 2012. The application is to install signage.
Good morning, Commissioner, Zachary Burlock, Preservation Staff. Application is to install vinyl film at one twelve Atlantic Avenue, which is located on southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue, Henry Street, Cobbler Road, Store District. The application for you to apply is translucent vinyl film at the display windows along Atlantic Avenue and Henry Street, as you see here in this plan, by Harris Henry, as part of the use of the space as preschool. The height of the film will vary from sixteen to eighteen as the sidewalk slips down on Atlantic and as it slips down where it's on Henry Street. So the commission rules allow for a maximum of four feet above the sidewalk or half of the display window, whichever is smaller. So as this proposal will exceed both height and display windows for most of them, those does require full permission review. So if you have any questions, the applicant is here to answer them. And they did provide a sample of the transistive film, this invasion of two. You want to answer, which is that model one.
Okay, any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board, six, recommending approval. Okay, if there are no questions, a motion goes in. Okay.
So the spazza and hood, obscuring the transparency of the window after a certain amount of where you want to explain sort of the reasoning behind that. I think it was really thought about for either signage, which is a good idea, or dress found uses where you're concealing some utilitarian or prestige, right?
Yeah, exactly. So the idea was to still always maintain a level of transparency in how the space while still allowed for some privacy installations. There's also signage rules allowed to calc signage, and sometimes those two things are combined. To sort of keep all of that in check, we decided to put a window on the wall height or portion of the window. So while you could fill in a transit window or a discreet amount of installation, also wanted to go with store fronts, it wasn't ready to be added as well. This is something I've been thinking about, that has come up recently with health issues. So the application is.
So it's not exactly a commercial storefront, it's being used as healthcare center. This was in the healthcare, um, healthcare facilities, kind of needed thing, but it still does provide some collectivity.
I think there's a very good reason for why the rule is there, but this is also a long term capability, a very, very good reason.
Good, thanks. Are there any agrees?
In the matter of document number L P C nineteen dash three nine zero three nine, one twelve Atlantic Avenue, Cobbler Road, Store District, the application is to install signage. I note that one twelve Atlantic Avenue was constructed pursuant to the program in sixteen dash six zero one six. I recommend approval noting that uncorporate damage or concealancy different features, limiting visibility of storefronts consistent with its current uses of preschool where properties report. But the proposed vinyl film will be adjacent to white building with no signage, thereby helping intimidate a discreet presence in the streetscape. That the vinyl film will not completely obscure the transparency of the windows, with transparency remaining in most of the upper quarters of the display windows that were reversible, and that the cumulative amount of signage in conjunction with the vinyl film is modest and will not detract from the streetscape or the historic.
Second call of paper. Any opposed? If this is approved, thank you. Thank you.
Next up is item number three, L P C one nine dash three eight six zero zero. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block one seventy-five, block seventy-five oh five, eighty-five Franklin Street, Triad Agency Store District. And the O B R South Store of Gotham designed by J. Morgan Slade, and all taken to one eight three. Application is to install railings and plant the.
Good morning, Commissioner, Michelle Carter, Preservation Staff. This application is for work at eighty-eight Franklin Street, which is located on the north side of Franklin Street. It's named Broadway, Church Street, and Triad Agency Store District. This proposal is to install railings and plant the. This slide shows various views on the nineteen forties through today of eighty-eight Franklin Street itself and the buildings on Church Street over which the rear facade can be seen. In photo on the bottom right, you can see a portion of the existing rear facade and railing in the building. In this slide, you can also see a portion of the mainhouse edition, previously approved by the commission in two thousand and twelve. This rendering shows the proposed five for top glass railings and planters which can be seen in the rear facade of eighty-eight Franklin Street from Sixth Avenue. This slide is a plan of the roof and the primary facade of the building over which the railing will not be visible. The applicant is proposing to use a glass railing with an interplanted coating, which will be installed on the inside of the existing metal railing. The railing is presented continually to board with sixty tall and athletic to lower the height by ten based on their feedback. This slide shows the render rate seen from a distance on Sixth Avenue as well as the previously installed mop upper. That mop upper being sixty. Applicant is here to answer any questions.
Any questions? We'll take this to anybody. Kelly Harrell.
Kelly Harrell, Store District Council. H T C advises installation of glass fans at the roof and appropriate. That pieces of glass are too large and too visible. As a result, this raises concerns about the effectiveness of glass and potential for the railing to appear even more visible. The replacement of glass railings in industrial neighborhood is inappropriate. With the goal of installing such large pieces is to raise the height of the railing for safety. H T C recommends that the applicant explore other options to achieve this goal, such as raising the height of the already existed, texturally appropriate, and taking it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, we have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board, one, recommending approval of the application. Would you like to respond to the comments that were just made? Just stating. I think she was commenting on the glass material. So I know you know that the glass that we're using is the kind of monopurpose and deep or display windows storefronts, so it's good. Our code is kind of had the whitest touch, um, to see the back. Any other? Also, the, the, the family has five kids ranging from one and a half to fifteen. The idea was to try to, not set, you know, lower. Okay, are there any other questions? Any other motion to close the hearing? Call of favor. So, um, this is a commission group, pinhead group, because it's visibility against the backdrop of larger buildings and sort of assort in the context of older buildings. So how do people feel about just extending the railing to glass? Normally, I'm suspicious of glass as a truly invisible material, but I think in this context, being against the modern building community as well, doesn't call attention to itself. Do we agree?
In the matter of L P C nineteen, George three nine six hundred, eighty-eight Franklin Street, Triad Agency Store District. The O B R South Store and Mop Road outside of Jane Morgan's three eight thirty from nineteen eighty-three. The application is to install railings and plant the. I note that the building's a style of scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Triad Agency Store District. I recommend approval. Finding that the work will not damage or destroy any significant or potential features of the building, but the glass railings set behind utilitarian, utilitarian level frame. The front frame features an anti-reflective coating, helping you to see from view. But the railing containers will only receive a colorful appearance at a distance of the building's secondary facades and in the context of other taller buildings and new populations. And that the work will not diminish the special potential and historic character of the building with the integrity of the store.
Call of favor. Any opposed? Approved, thank you.
Next is item number four, is L P C one nine dash three eight eight zero seven. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five ninety-one, block ten, one hundred eighty-seven avenue south, in the British Village Historic District. Commercial building designed by Matthew W. Del Rosario, in development in thirty-three. Application is to install.
Good morning, Commissioners Julian, this is Michelle Carter, Preservation Staff. One hundred eighty-seven avenue south is located on the east side of Second Avenue South on a triangular lot at the corner of Crow Street and Seventh Avenue South, in the British Village Historic District. The proposed work is located at the southernmost end of the Seventh Avenue South facade. Currently, there is an existing sidewalk canopy that has been in this location for many years, shown here outlined in the right dot. Can you see it in the circuit nine two point six, oh, oh? Here. The following slides show current condition photos of the entrance and existing sidewalk canopy. They have a surface signage for colored spaces in the cellar, illustrated by these square nets that's in the case where you enter the doors on the first floor and then immediately go downstairs to the cellar space. The proposal is to remove the existing sidewalk canopy and install an internally illuminated marquee. Additional work shown at the doors and entrance surrounds giving view at staff level. Let's go through the existing elevations sections. Another close up of the existing additional doors. And the proposed work. I shouldn't have best mentioned it here, but this slide shows some examples of marquees. The applicant is available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board, ten, recommending approval, but asking that the doors we reserve for those who can view at staff level and not for us. So I think this entrance is originally has large canopy. This one is quite modest, actually, in comparison. And I think that even the illumination will be very modest, it's just cut out letters. The whole box isn't illuminated. So I think that in context, we still have an example of this. Okay.
In the matter of the subject of appropriateness for Manhattan, L P C nineteen three eight eight one seven, one hundred eighty-seven avenue south, British historic district. Commercial building designed by Manhattan City Building, called Hill. Built in nineteen thirty-three. Application is to install a marquee. I note that the building's sound scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the architectural and historic character of the historic district. And also, this portion of Seventh Avenue South has included a variety of theatrical menus, including the Sherry's Bar Playhouse, the active playhouse in twentieth century, and this entrance has a set feature canopy since the early twentieth century. I recommend approval finding that the work will not eliminate the handbag and decorative feature that presents the main theater's main entrance will be the capital, the industry of this building, and then the store hierarchical organization of the facade. But the marquee will be on a commercial thoroughfare, featuring a variety of projected interior qualities and signage, and will not exceed the height or projection of new clothes cafes that neighboring properties thereby helping it remain a secondary presence within the streetscape. But the marquee will be semi-designed, modest in scale, and consistent in the marquee's final dependence on historic history in terms of placement, size, materials, and finishes. That the marquee will be installed with a minimum of penetration to the mortgage joints with plain brickwork and simple minimal supports that will not obscure any significant architectural features of the building. That the diffuse lighting and cut out address numbers of the marquee will be globally graded in industry dominance. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building.
Call of favor. Any opposed? Approved, thank you.
Item number five, L P C one dash one nine dash three six eight eight six. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block eleven eighty-eight seventy-five for to be seventy-six West U S Fifth Street, AKA five hundred ninety-five Seventh Avenue, the northwest side of Central Park West Historic District. Over the last four hours, our class building is under John G. Prudential, and built in eighteen ninety. For item five, the application is to install signage.
Good morning, Commissioners Caroline, Preservation Staff. The southern park is located on the south side of the street just to the west of the tourist avenue. The applicant is the tenant that currently occupies basement and is proposing to install this bracket sign at the first floor of this particular bay of the facade. And it is located at this basement level and proposing a bracket sign at this bay. Here's a tax photo showing the conditions of that time. This is where the tenant currently occupies, and this is where they're proposing a bracket sign. By current designation, nineteen ninety, you'll know that there are commercial tenants that occupy this center basement and at the first floor of this. So this current condition photograph will show some of the space down here. And this is the, don't get into this arrow, this is the location of where the applicant is proposing this bracket sign. And they're proposing it here so that they can get some site maintenance noise problems on this avenue. Here again, is where they're proposing it. So there is also, I notice here, there is an existing homature that's from the actions. Where the row is not approved by the commission, they're just showing that it's there. Again, this is a location where they're proposing the bracket sign. I think this is.
What's, what's all that existing damage?
This, so this, this building, so on Seventy-sixth Street and along Columbus Avenue, there are multiple violations by the tenants, or store tenants. So those are just kind of the rungs what was there, or prior tenants, sorry.
Give all the, the bracket being removed for the, the.
We're going to work with enforcement on that.
Any other questions? Jeanne Persani?
Good morning, Commissioner Sean Persani, the landmark request. The landmark request is a ticket of appropriateness to be found a proposal to repurpose the existing bracket for a nominal eighteen by twelve carpside sign. To be a sensitive request from a small business owner making use of a hundred to twenty-five year old landhome. Further, it's difficult to argue with a company which endeavors to quote teach dogs and arguments basic manners and canation. Sometimes absent, but always welcome to New York. Landmark request is a ticket of appropriateness to be suggested the commission approve this application.
Mark Diller.
I'll follow that, do it. Good morning, Commissioners Mark Diller, the tiered community board's preservation committee. I am proud and happy to support this application with the robust support of my board. The materials, we find to be quite appropriate as we do the signs' scale and its lettering. It harkens back to a, not quite Castellana era, but another era when side street commercial was much more robust than it is now, and it is a part of the historic character of our neighborhood that should be included in our work, and so I'm happy to support it on that basis as well. It serves a necessary function in that you really can't see the establishment from Columbus Avenue, we know it's only about a hundred feet away, and both for, both. And it's a better answer, it's a better solution than sandwiched word, which I think is actually violation for itself. So for all of those reasons, we're happy to support and recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Any other questions for the applicant? A motion goes in here. Call of favor. So, I mean, this building, we know that the tax photo had a sign on the other way. And so this is a base in buildings for these first works that's for a long time. Even though it's on the avenue. This is a sign in here with grandfather and people. This is a, you know, modestly scaled bracket sign. They're happy over there.
Which uses this small units.
All right, great. So Michael, I think.
Regarding Seventy-sixth West State Fifth Street, also known as Eighty-five, seven, 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 the Northwest Side Historic District. The application is to install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district. I recommend approval finding that the bracket sign will be installed in plain basing, plain basing with a number of names and feature features. At the location, bracket sign is first brought to the main bay. Be directed above the lower green commercial space that would possibly be the signage that historically was found at the first floor of the central basement and first floor of the building. But the proposed bracket sign marks will be proportionate to the size of the building for that facade. And that the proposed bracket sign marks are used to special character of the building and the Northwest Side Central West Historic District.
Call of paper. Any opposed? That's approved.
The next item is number six, L P C one nine dash two seven. The next item is number six, LPC 19H27, for an application for certain appropriateness to the borough of Manhattan, block 1141, lot 3, but 128 West 7th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. And the over at Kool Dance Style Roadhouse designed by Charles H. Lindsay in 1883. Yeah, application is in large group competition, chair of stair bulkhead, and your other work that's cut off from you, and so call it approved.
Good morning, Commissioners, Hallie Hughes for the Preservation Staff. This item is 128 West 7th Street, located between East Broadway and Columbus Avenue in the Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. The proposal for you today is to enlarge the footprint of an existing one-story rooftop addition, retain a one-foot setback from the rear facade, add a full width second story to the addition, construct a stair bulkhead and install a handful of wooden railings. The proposed alterations will not be visible in the public thoroughfares. This is a section of the building showing the existing rooftop addition. Over here. And this is the proposed addition, showing the enlargement of the footprint, then one foot of the rear facade, and the addition of a one-story bulkhead rooftop. The applicant is here to elaborate on your proposal and answer any questions you may have. Steve, any further questions?
I'm Jason Shannon of the Architect for the Pride. I'm Jason Shannon, I'm the Architect for the Pride, and thank you all for your participation. I know there's some concerns, I guess, from our staff or our discussions about this, and I think some few of the community board are here to discuss it, so I'll try to address what I think might be some concerns as I go through here. So this is the location. As it's here, you can see where the end of our road townhouses. Next to us is a eight-story building, which is obviously very different. What I've shown on this drawing is these red and rooftop additions on this block, and then I know the rear yard is interesting, there are many in the interior of this, the rear of this block. This, once I get a video early, I'm woke up talking about. The apartment that the owner's own starts at the original townhouse on the top floor, that brick section, which originally was a 300 square foot studio. Somewhere 2005, had a different owner added an addition. So the current apartment is 700 and 200 square feet. What we're proposing is adding another 200 square feet. The owners are two kids, four people, his family, and they're trying to get an additional bedroom on the top of this addition for housing. So what we're proposing is no changes to the existing historic townhouse. All of our work is above it. That is one thing that we responded to the food board, but we originally were going to provide two of the windows in the existing townhouse. We also originally had our additions to be aligned with the rear facade, but no change that we made since our community board agreement. Materials are aluminum, it's a dark aluminum. Right now, the only, there is an addition on top with the stair bulkhead in front of the facade, for the front of this townhouse, there are apartments front and back, and that is a dark gray aluminum. We also like the aluminum as it's much lighter than brick, if you were at brick on top of this townhouse. And generally, I'm the school of distinguishing the new versus the old. So I think it's very important to note that none of this is seen in the public view. This is photos after our mock-up was installed, and we had our staff, Landmarks come and look, and it's not visible. Really, two important points I want, we're not changing at all the historic townhouse and it's not visible in the public right of way. This is a front facade elevation, both existing and opposed. On the left, you can see existing, there is a stair bulkhead, which is the existing upper stair bulkhead in front of filming, and the thing with the railing sign is the existing stucco penthouse, which was built in 2005. And ours on the right side is, you can see existing bulkhead remaining, and then we have the standard stair outside of that roof and add the 200 square feet of addition. This, I think specifically you see it from the back. I think, you know, there's a lot of question, I think, of appropriateness in terms of size. This would be the only two-story addition, I think, on our block, and I think, you know, certainly I see that being a concern, but I feel like looking at the massing of our two buildings next to us, it would be appropriate to add onto it. So this is existing. When you're staying on the roof of the existing penthouse, you have a taller building, an extra depth of, and we have a previously approved by Landmarks, it's mostly elevator and mechanical bulkhead. So in our post, we're still shorter than both of our properties next to us. So basically, so infilling a missing tooth in your work in terms of the rear facade. So I think in terms of massing, I feel it would be appropriate. This is just another aerial view, courtesy of Google Maps, trying to give you a sense of what's happening in all these roofs. There are quite a few rooftop additions, you can see, you can see the bulkhead that is next to us on the 13132. Our project would be key there, and then the eight-story building is to the east of us. You'll also see that there's a courtyard on the eight-story building, so we're actually not in front of any of their walls, we're in the courtyard. This is standing on the existing penthouse roof. So the red here is trying to highlight where our addition, our additional room would be. So you can see the existing bulkhead that's brick on our west, and we're not taller than that. We're basically, you know, if you were looking at this, we're still going to be looking at a wall, right now it's brick, ours would be metal, and the blue would be the rooftop head. And then the other side, again, taller building, our addition is opposite that courtyard, so we would not be up against one of their, any of their walls. This is a solid addition existing, which has the penthouse from 2005, and then our proposed, next to it. I, I also want to point out, and I think, you know, we're only in the rear facade, not in the public view, the question, what are we seeing back there? And I have a couple photos just to show some of the various additions and rear facades looking from this property to the other side, that there are quite a few changes, quite a few rear facade additions, some modern, some not so modern, so I don't think there's a very contiguous historic element back there. These are the materials, the aluminum and the windows, and then the roof deck would be concrete. And these are just photos of the bulkhead. You can see that, our mockup, and you can see that it is shorter than existing right next to it. So I'm just going to go back to this, and I know it's the, your questions?
Can you just go to the elevation that shows those tall buildings?
Does it exist in the post?
And so the parapet links to your left have a basem parapet that has raised the height of their wall in this section?
Yes.
So the roof line is not, you can't see it?
Uh, no, you can't see their roof line.
Are there other questions? Or take testimony, or come on to you. Beth Lewis?
Good morning, my name is Beth Lewis, I'm the president and co-author associated with 128 West 7th Street, which is the nine-story building to the right of 128. We object to the proposal currently before this committee. We show a party ball with a four-story, 18-year-old house that is located at 128. We think that it is the role of Landmarks to ensure changes are appropriate to the character of landmark buildings in historic districts. We think the entire scope of this proposal, including the height of the rooftop, and the rear door extensions that have a proposal, is excessive and inappropriate for our Upper West Side Historic District in general, and these roadhouses in particular. During 17th race with us, they have a resolution that they enacted at its meeting on June 13th, on 19th, a post-safeness addition. We also understand that Landmarks and Historic District Council will be presenting testimony and opposition as well today. Landmarks' character determination is not limited to what's currently in this building of public orderways. Landmarks is entitled to take into consideration both material and design elements in making its character determination. Here, there are a number of objection of material and design elements that must be weighed by Landmarks. Landmarks should also not favor PCL applications on rooftop additions. There is already an addition approved in 2005 to which we did not object. The 2005 addition is not architecturally inconsistent with the fabric of the neighborhood. The architectural components of this proposal today simply makes no connection to the nature of the news, whether it's our building or the directly adjoining, conjoined, the roadhouses at 13132, or any of the groundstone buildings on the other side of the dome on the North Side, West 7th Street. We have a number of issues about the rest of the characters here. Materials, we think, are completely inappropriate, pulling the original addition and the proposed addition to present a relatively flat, bad, stiff facade, and it is not a super hard spectrum of facade, notwithstanding today's presentation that indicates that the upper addition might be pulled back a bit. You're asking here, pretty traditional silver punch window opening, two glass panels of different sizes, it's not typical of the town, but punch windows, they still be on these sort of the roadhouses. And while we know the physical from the street, a two-story by metal plate wall, it impresses barbed earth finish, it's not appropriate to any rooftop additions. The new addition on the pre-studied is simply an entirely planned broken wall. We hope that has the proposed inappropriate on the mixed floor balance, inappropriate color, inappropriate bulk, inappropriate pullback, that which is specifications, and inappropriate elimination of the free pitch windows. We also understand that while it may not be directly to Landmarks purging, we know from the record, the proposal raises structural integrity issues beyond incessant bulkhead aesthetic issues presented here.
Your time is up.
Yes. There are significant issues, I just wanted to consider to come over here, with the retaining wall, metal buildings, and we think that the addition of these two stories will cause structural integrity issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. This proposed addition is inappropriate in both its sincerity and its bulk. The addition extends all the way out to the rear wall and uncomfortably extrudes vertically without a setback. Additionally, the large window and door openings at the rear, and the dark metal plating are all sympathetic to the structure. This historic roadhouse is deserving of a better treatment, thus, we should see reference any additions to it should be done with appropriate contextual materials.
Sean Persani?
Good morning, Commissioner Sean, presenting the Landmark West. The Landmark West Executive of Appropriateness Committee found the proposal to extend an existing rooftop addition excessive. Proposal calls for a substantial amount of extension, which is hardly visible from the street. Drawing LPC 111 takes a line of sight of bulkhead, which is not full width, and residents argue mock-up images provided do not accurately reflect the street view, which would reveal a significant visibility of your 20-foot addition before mechanical extensions. Further, the rear elevation, on the rear elevation, proposal seeks to interrupt the road out of scale window and door openings on sometimes coplanar additional levels, levels, plus the repetitive work for international shipment. The Landmark West Executive of Appropriateness Committee does not find this proposal appropriate in massing form or material, suggest the Commission not accept this application.
Mark Diller?
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair of Community Board 7 Preservation Committee, here with a nearly unanimous resolution in opposition. Testimony earlier related to a committee vote on June 13th, but the full board has weighed in on this application and with vote of 31 to 1, you know, almost unanimously opposed it, the one tells you that it's give or less sign. The, there were a number of very good reasons for, for opposing this, and I guess today, on the day of the baseball All-Star Game, here I am batting cleanup, so let me try to pull some of this together for you. The, there were, there were four concerns that we raised and had consensus around at committee and then at full board. One of them appears to have been addressed, and that was the easiest and most obvious one that had to be addressed, which is the elimination or conjoining of the punched windows in the back, which you, you Commissioners and we as a board have always felt was important to respect the rear yard and the sense of place that is a part of the historic district and that which we are committed to preserving. So that is the only concession made. Among the other issues that we have gone with this are pulling, well, first of all, let's be clear, this is a rooftop addition on top of a rooftop addition, and there is no way, there's even, if you look at the, at the elevation that shows you the dental image, you can see that there actually could be yet another, and it has to stop somewhere. I suggest you today that today is where it should stop. The, the coplanar nature of the, the bottom, pulling out the existing rooftop addition, I get tripped up because rooftop addition, a proper rooftop addition wants a different terminology. But the, so the coplanar nature of pulling a, I'm going to have my colleagues reference to a cargo unit, so pulling the cargo unit back to the existing roof, rather, rear facade line is just plain imperfect, there's no other way to characterize that. Then to put another addition on top of that with the same dark materials, it does actually evoke a William Pullman. And this is one of those situations, and you have seen this before, where maybe one or two of these things in isolation might not be as inappropriate as the cumulative effect of these things. I want to quickly mention the front facade, because there is a teeny bit of what they're proposing on the front that actually is visible, it's a, it's a bulkhead to be sure, but it gives me leeway to, to make this point to you. There is one asymmetric window in the front, and while it can't be seen from the street, it's there, and it is thuggish, knows its neighbors, and it is not appropriate to the historic character. So for all of these reasons, we recommend disapproval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, come up and state your name before you speak.
My name is Wamal Wainmore, and I'm a neighbor and member of 128 West 7th Street, which is next to the basem, this, across the courtyard. I just want to, I know that zoning law is not appropriate to speak about here, but I did want to mention that every inch of square footage that's above on, to the west of this building is actually bulkhead, most of which is chimney, and chimney is required to, to be certainly a number of feet above the rooftop. And so if they go up to the level of a chimney, then the chimney would have to be extended as well. It's just really kind of violation on top of violation, that would call it a public chimney creep, so to speak, and while that's a zoning issue, more than it is a Landmark issue, I think that it is within the purview of this committee to cut back that fall being excessive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Would you like to respond to the comments?
Well, thank you. I'm going to do that last one with practice. The chimney has to be three feet below and rooftop, within 10 feet of any, you know, and our proposed addition is still greater than three feet away, so it would not require any change in chimney. We've heard a few people here that are opposed, and I would say, you know, if any building in New York City required a unanimous decision by people who could see it, nothing very big built. I think there are people who would like to see this built, people who own this building to the co-op, this co-ownership, ten people. The first went to them, talked about the proposal, they approved of this. The person who asked to approve in front of us, who would see our addition the most, approves of it. He's the one who also got the dark metal, and we'll be putting dark metal also. We talked after, I did also try to reach out to Community Board, I reached out to Community Board 7, and asked for some of the names of the neighbors here, and did not get a response. So we did hear from the owner of 13132, it is approving on the project. And of course, the owners, I feel like, you know, there's some opinions you can run around, and I feel like the owner's opinions have got to weigh pretty heavily here, and unfortunately, they had a pre-planned trip to Embolga, actually, to come up here. But we spent a year with them, working on the project. So they thought this, with looking at the zoning, that says that they can build to this height. We went through... We went through extensive security protocols, going through this Landmark process, and it really wasn't until about six years ago when the idea of rooftop on top of rooftop was offensive in addition. I think it's appropriate for two particular reasons. The current apartment, the 600, is 31 square meters, we're proposing 929 square meters. This is not a large apartment, maybe we'd ever be on our own, this entire townhouse with another floor just for like a pool or something, but this is a family four, trying to get enough space so they are not veteran to the future themselves. And I would like to mention that New York City needs more housing. You know, the, there is a housing crisis, and the only way, New York City, Manhattan particularly is not getting any better, the only way we're going to get more housing is go up. And I think this is something that Landmarks is going to have to see more of in the future. Going up is, is the only way to get more housing, and I think in this case, not visible from the street. It is a modest apartment, it is no taller than either of the bulk on this side of it. And I feel like, I feel like this would be, you know, it should be pretty.
Two things that were raised in the testimony, could you speak to the visibility that we raised over the front, and then also, because the dimensions of both setbacks?
Okay, so the front setback, I believe, is about 20 feet from the front building. The rear setback is just one foot. So that's.
And then the second floor is?
The second floor is approximately 90 from that, we'd act that something would be. In terms of visibility, I, you know, proposed, after the lockup was installed, the lockup had four standing on it, both two-staff, people came out to the site to visit. I don't believe that they speak themselves that they've seen anything, but I don't believe this is accurate.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
On paper. So, discussion.
Well, I can support this application as a precedent. I think what we're looking at here is a row of three townhouses that were approved at the same time, right, somehow. And the sense of unity between them at the back is something that we often consider, especially once a row, if you have a row. I think that the modifications to the fifth floor existing addition, extension of it, basically, nearly along the rear facade, is something that we generally cannot afford. Generally, when asked to review rooftop additions, unstoreroom additions, we ask to give a setback, 35 to that typical number. So, yeah. Looks like this one does not setback very much at all, maybe a foot off of the edge of the corners, which is probably itself a facade blow. So, I think by those standards, it would not be acceptable. I can't remember a case where we've approved a two-story addition with this, in this kind of configuration. Certainly one that looked like a kind of a double stack. I think we've, I think we've done it where it looked like a single line, but it had multiple lines in it, suppressing the floor, you know, the lower floor, playing games to a scale that seemed to be one story. I want to note here that the applicants have not, there is room to reduce this, they could have, they have attempted floor-to-floor dimensions here, that's not required of code, nor for a apartment this size, it's necessarily a federal, certainly not, you know, or NTOs, but it's not the minimum. And I think that, I mean, the argument, I think the massive argument is one that we have considered as a mitigating factor, that's right, being adjacent to a larger building. But I personally think that the appearance of this, the massing of it, the fact that it appears to be closer to the rear facade than most of the other rear, rear yard additions, I'm sorry, rooftop additions, just altogether doesn't make for a very strong case. And I think one of the problems is that it's not clear to me anyway what the limits are in terms of pushing the sixth floor and newer addition back further, which might have made less visible, I'd give it, well, I'd call it that. There, I'm assuming that the problem is that you can own your own homes to a certain point, and can't really extend that, but that's kind of not our problem. It seems to me like, like there could have been a modest rooftop addition that was relatively less visible and that looked like a bulkhead, but this isn't it.
And do you think that, I know they probably can't go back further because there's another apartment in front, but if they were to reduce the width, it would look more like a bulkhead than that maybe?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, there's many ways, I'm looking at this very small apartment, there are many ways that one could shape the surroundings, one had the ability to do so from a legal, structural point of view, I really can't say what it could do. I think that this, just from aesthetic point of view, from scale point of view, from perspective point of view, just doesn't really measure up. And I think that the notion of a two-story addition per se, or addition on top of addition, has precedent issues that we should be concerned about. I just don't think this is something that is current.
I see it's current, but we have, where the context is supported, we have done that to the second floor reading as something more like a bulkhead, something considered. Diana?
Yeah, I feel that the context is very different here than most of what we've seen in the past. I do think, yes, if there's a way to make the second floor appear less prominent, that could be good, that could be good too. I feel like it's also on one side, and on the other side is that it's a whole structure, it's not totally, you know, to be of all, which is what. Also, those existing on 107 shows that the other adjacent premises, which I've taken by the, through the, by the extensions already on the front, which this does not have any extension, I say, not extending, but extensions, but I'm just saying, it's not that they have touched themselves, they have put it for a competition. I feel that it would be less intimidating in mutual to have another, because there's adjacent buildings, and, because they don't have any extensions on the front, I could look at it differently. But if there is a way to make it appear less visible, or to, maybe less visible is the wrong word, less, yeah, less prominent, that would make it more susceptible in the context.
Anyone else, yeah?
Yeah, I think there may be a way to reconfigure the layout perhaps to, you know, compatible in the top floor, to more the whole configuration, but I think also, the comment on the material, the dark, and that is, it's also not appropriate. But I believe the original existing addition was stacked up, I think that would be a better, I think more appropriate material for the issue.
So I think what we want, we won't take an action today, I think there is some open that's to consider, a second floor, but I think that the scale must be reduced, looking at floor, floor heights as well as the size, how you can reconfigure it, maybe it is more of a utilitarian feature on the roof. I also study materials, I think some of the materials can also help reduce the appearance of it. And I think they probably got a lot of support for pulling the fifth floor, the eighth floor, so I'm very glad as well. So, if you'd want to follow, there is a proposal that you'd like to come back, we can see you again. Motion to close the hearing?
We're going to move to item number seven, this is LPC 19-573, an application for subsequent appropriations number of, at 11-136, 915 Weston Avenue, Riverside West Avenue, still a pushing extension to, where it's on supply of style apartment building, it's on block, it's on, and two, the application is to install.
Good morning Commissioners, Kelly Carroll, Preservation Staff, this application is to install canopy at 915 Weston Avenue, which is located here on the southwest corner of Weston Avenue and West, Fifth Street, Riverside West and Arts District. The application for you is to install canopy here from the entrance, Weston Avenue. Each window is an inch with white lettering, framing, and then gold tiles attached to the masonry right here. The front end is a little bit off, but they mentioned gold throughout. Show like right here, where they're proposing, the back is to be installed, and the application is just closing.
Good morning, this is Kara Rickle, thanks for your representation, since we're recording, that is my office, we're looking from with Baggett, our architect, and some other designated ownership. As at the beginning, we're here to present our small proposal for 915 Weston Avenue. As you mentioned, located on the southwest corner of West Street, Weston Avenue, in Riverside West, in historic district, section two, just designated in 2015. It's a 1922, and it's on survival buildings, by the owner, Ari O'Finn-Della, who's early in his career. Fifteen-story apartment building, brick with limestone and terracotta detailing, most notably around the primary entrance on Weston Avenue, where we have double type masonry stone surround, this is the foundation of our proposed work. You can see here the 1927, 1927 historic photograph, that originally there was a full-length or two-to-curb canvas clad arch canopy, which was removed as far as 1940. So again, existing through this image, so the canvas clad canopy tied back to the masonry surround. And a closer look at that historic photograph, we're reporting today because currently there's a kind of a sin connection at the sidewalk, which we're concerned we're being able to set the full length of the sidewalk, the whole length of the sidewalk has since been diminished in depth, it's a little shorter now. But this leads us to our proposal for an eight-foot long canvas canopy, tied back to the masonry facade here, as Adam mentioned, at a plain, non-decorative portion of that stone surround, here. Beneath the arched opening, these beautiful glass and iron double-eared doors and multi-like transom, so the canvas canopy will sit kind of proud of the door, it'll stop at the stone surround, as the historic canopy did, shown here in session. So it allows for full reading of those doors and the transom, as was done historically. Details, it'll be a gray canvas with white trim, the address will be on the northeast and south sides, and again, the gold rods tie back to the building. We do have samples for you to see, to make note that the finish for the rod, the example is for finish only, we're moving a one-inch round, this is actually two-inch round. And then just considering this within the context of this historic district, the full-length or two-to-curb canopies are certainly a part of the character of the neighborhood, especially on the wider avenues like Weston Avenue. But when we took a closer look throughout the district, we found a number of instances where the full-length canopies had been removed or replaced with canopies of shorter length and possibly different support system. Also notable, one of the few locations where we have marquees in the district, of course, which featured that tieback condition that we're removing for our canopy, all this is kind of leading to a district that has a variety of canopy types, canopy oning types, sizes, colors. So, the installation of those canopy here, although shorter than the historic we feel is, is keeping with that history of change and alteration in all the districts.
Do you, are there any questions? Take this way of taking that. Sean presenting.
Good morning Commissioners, Sean, presenting the Landmark Quest. The Landmark Quest Executive Department of Appropriations Committee found a proposal to return the canopy to this facade as a sympathetic one. Informed by its own precedent, but less intrusive, the profile complements the landmark and serves its residents without damaging the facade. The Landmark Quest Executive Department of Appropriations Committee suggest the commission approve this application.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. HDC appreciates the provision of historic evidence submitted as part of this application. While the new canopy designed is meeting form of historic photograph, canopy in 1927 spirited in the opening of the entry, from the rendering, it appears that this mistake may happen again. We have said any new canopy fit within the base room allows for electrical thinking.
Thank you. Mark Diller?
Good morning Commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair, Community Board Seven Preservation Committee. I just want to make sure that you have before you our full board resolution, which recommended approval as appropriate to the historic district by a vote of 30 to 4 with no extensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Sure. Yes, we do acknowledge that it is going to be sitting in front of the door at the masonry surround, so it does, to a hindrance of reading the opening. We chose to follow the historic canopy, having a closed door that would still allow the reading of the door and the decorative metalwork at the entrance. So it's an acknowledged choice.
Thank you. Any final questions? Do you have a motion to close the hearing? Second. On paper. So, how do you feel about this canopy? I think there's a history of sidewalk canopies at apartment buildings in this district, even some true warrants, as we've shown in this presentation, with respect to this shape. I think that we often encourage it, and conform it, and historically often do not, it's clear, and the choice to put it forward allows you what actually be that. Love it, love it. So I, do you have?
I think it should be, I don't think it's a direct interpretation of previous ones interpretation, that one has a different shape to it. It's, you know, I think that it does skewer what I work, that there is a transom, it's a period of, and it's going to go across the inside, and probably the canvas returns as well. I think if it is our typical procedure, I would, I would be so.
You have a motion, Sean, may I? Okay, so we'll conclude it.
915 Weston Avenue, Riverside West Avenue, still, I think, an application to install canopy later, and a rule of thumb, it's a thorough precedent to the installation of the mansions, mansions, buildings of this type in this historic district, but the scale shape and size of the canopy will relate well to the entrance. The kind of that runs to the console, the plain masonry, will not cost damage to a star pattern, and the canopy, Sunday, is a natural, that grain, white canvas pattern, a few years ago, or or a plexico, building canopies throughout this historic district, and then none of the work will conceal or detract from the estate of the entire construction.
Paul Baker. Are you opposed? Thank you. So we're going to take a five-minute break before we start the public reading items. And then we'll come back.
First is item number one. This is an application for a certificate of progress, the borough of Manhattan, block 54, 1915, through Prince Street, AKA 22 Avenue, the Mariposa, in the Sullivan Thompson historic district. These are two buildings altered circa 1960. The application is to alter the facade, to start additions, and to go on escalation. This was last presented at the public hearing on May 21st, 2019, and no action is taken at that time.
Good morning, Commissioners, the New York Preservation Staff. The application is for work at 200 Prince Street, which is comprised of a department building at the west, friendly father bidding park, and a smaller building to the east, situated mid-block on the south side of Prince Street. Buildings do not contribute to the Sullivan Thompson historic district. The proposal was first heard on May 21st of this year, which this scheme was proposed. The initial proposal was to modify masonry openings and install storefronts, entrances into and a canopy at the west building. Construct a one-story extension in front of Prince Street, the middle of the last storefront. Reconstruct the north side of these buildings to include a ground floor structure, single light pressure openings at the second unit floors, and an interpreted metal and glass pillars, and install a continuous projecting metal van throughout both buildings and the extension, ensuring release of signs. The Commissioner is present at the hearing, express making consensus for support for the proposed work at the larger building to the west. However, the Commissioners have concerns regarding the amount of placing and scale of the structure at the smaller building spaces, and the composition of those placing at the west side. So this was previously proposed, and now currently proposed. The proposal has been revised to address these concerns. As this building provisions into incorporating metal trims, earth layers, and ground floors that are redesigned by one life, the facade of the left quarters, and modifying the storefront by reducing the number of hallways and split windows and transom, and making sidelines at the entrances, and incorporating metal檐. Metal檐 was also added to the corners of the interpreted part of the street. And at the extension, the number of hallways at the third and fourth streets of the Mall and Thompson grounds will also be drawn. So to flip to a close-up of the historic building and extension, as previously proposed, there are no changes. Full first floor rotation, rendering to the new changes that the historic buildings were made from, as used to be on this. Here is the former, the former apartment. Third detail showing the van and the corners, as well as a section sort of, as I mean, of the facade, which we... Have the argument to your next one.
Do you have any questions? As Amy said, the last one of our comments, and I just wanted to go to the record, we did get two emails, which were emailed to you all yesterday through email. And one is opposing a project with tenancy issues and quality of work issues. And the other is an email with comments and details. So our comments really focus on the smaller piece of building and the big building between. And there's discussion about the desire to unify these buildings and their complex. But my comments were that while you can have some unity, without continuity, the building should really be as whole of a, some have to be supported, and so have also, well, houses in this district. So they've made some changes to both, the least building, and three pillars, and other things, and the second one, and they've also revised the configuration to reading of these, as well as making adjustments to the boxes. So do people feel that this is addressed the concerns?
I didn't see it the first time. I was happy it looks basically identical. My only concern is that stucco wall, the building to which it is related, I say cold brick wall, on the basement. So I would suggest that they make that wall brick, just to kind of create that relationship or process that relationship.
Just one thing on that. I believe that is an existing wall that, if it exists, I'm not sure if either has stuck on it now, but like, they're not actually reconstructing a wall that's new, so we do have required, which is a problem with that. No, I personally want to adjust that.
Do listen to me. I thought I told you the content. Do you go? Jeanne?
I, Jeanne, I like the direction of the surprise presentation we gave in the first one. The recommendations that Commissioners made were very thoughtful, and I think the response works here. I mean, I think the changes to the base of the center building actually make that read a little more clearly as a retail front, like those that existed in the, in the polished neighborhood. And I still appreciate the contemporaries on the connectivity to the other.
Any other questions?
200 Prince Street, AKA 22 Avenue, the Mariposa, Sullivan, on this historic street. The application is to call for the facade, its positions, and the board's consideration. Noting the two buildings at 200 Prince Street cannot contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Sullivan Thompson historic district that governs the wall, finding that the alteration to these two buildings, which are not buildings for which the historic district expresses, will maintain the reading of the buildings and site as a small complex and will not diminish the special architectural historic character of the Sullivan Thompson historic district. That the reconstruction of the highly altered facade, the history of it, will not eliminate any certain features, that the contemporary design of the new facade, which in recess with tears, that is still coming in, with great cladding with punch openings and an imperative metal on the last corners, will be compatible with the corner of the old church, which is a seven-point block. And at the same time, will recall proportions, features of the smaller residential building that still come along in this historic district. Construction of a full head width addition of this building, which is stucco tile and punch openings, will retain the skill and character of a small commercial building, and will not affect further into central green space and the scarality of the building on the block. The excavation and the lead assessment, the addition and the disbuilding will be done in a plan with common building regulations, under supervision of a licensed professional engineer to act the version facade into a joint building. The presence of storefronts as the ground floors of all buildings will be keeping with the traditional history of the building, of buildings which are in this historic district, which will hold also much of its, which is in the early 19th century, and avoids the question. That the controlled dark finish metal and glass storefront, including projecting base and bulkheads, at the west building, and chairs and split windows and the bulkhead of each building, will recall in that way the details and proportion of the historic storefronts of the historic district. That the one-story addition facing Prince Street and connecting the two existing buildings , which are in metal and glass, five-fold door assemblies and metal and glass characters, will align the planning of the street wall, therefore, thereby reinforcing the street wall and helping the addition remain low-scale to the street speed. And with regard to the ground, yes, storefronts, that the continuous projecting metal van between the ground and second floors, which can integrate the practice signs, the storefront entrances, will unify the two buildings and propose additional of the ground. That the top finish metal and glass entrances into the avenue of the Mariposa facade of the west building, will unify the base of the building and be keeping with the entrances and the ground to the west street speed. That the proposed black finish metal maquette on the avenue of the Mariposa facade of the west building, will simply present a design implicable in terms of placement, rejection, material details, and finish.
Paul Baker. Any questions?
If the second public meeting, item number 1019-3900, application for a certificate of progress, in the borough of Manhattan, block 1754, block 2024, 47 East, 129 Street, AKA 5015 East, 130th Street, and 2411, 23 Madison Avenue, 4145, 239th Street, Church of the Church of All Saints, and the Catholic parish house and school individual. An Italian Gothic of ours style church complex designed by Winwood, Gascoigne, and Russell in 1933 and 1940. The application is to remove special windows and electric graphic connoisseuries, as was presented at the public meeting in June of 2019, and no action is taken at that time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. James Hill, Preservation Staff. All Saints complex is on the east side of West End Avenue, between 129th and 130th Streets. Valerie Campbell of the Great Hope Parish, and Sam White of PDW, are here to go over the highest presentations. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to move the proceedings? Paul Baker? Aye.
The way here with Sam White from PDW, the actual presenting, consolidated, all Saints Presbyterian and Thomas Towne, Charles Norrejo. But as a result of the comments of the Commissioners in the last meeting, we reviewed the scope of the rules and applied more rigorously the requirements of Canada law to the rules' scope. And this essentially, in all, is a claim that certain ventilator windows that block those statements from those, could remain because they had remained, because they had no religious iconography on their mats, some had, you knew, because they did. The result of that is that we are removing eleven of those ventilator windows, and thirty-six of the ventilator windows are remaining. Just to note, counting on this project is very, very difficult. One window is two ventilator windows, specifically divided by religious, but really is dependent on how you count them. That is the essentially change to the submission of the page here. If you get forward, I can just show you the example. There is a case where the ventilator windows do not have inscriptions on them, remain. We have examples where the ventilator windows with inscriptions were removed. And then lastly, we have here, in this case, the minimal window is a true ventilator, and it had no inscription, so it is remaining. The windows on either side are block ventilators, and they do not have the structural definition or occupancy of the ventilator in the center. And as a result of that, we are not proposing to put a transom bar to mark the location of the old ventilator, because it was not a ventilator. The transom bar, the windows that we're moving is up there, that's just a stabilizer bar down there, which is intended to be, so the iconographic element that justified the rule of some, and now of others, was the inscriptions of text within the central panel. That is correct. And how is that text created? Was it applied with paint or letter, painted with letter, and then re-screwing? What I came to do was, I wouldn't, I didn't put in that. Usually when it's got active fact, I imagine, nobody built it on day one, sold it on day two, and you know the guy came on day five, so, something like that. Quite, quite, quite spirited scraping these things off is, 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 is. Thanks. We also checked to see that the case was only for company, and it was not. He's got plenty.
Last time they were, they asked if they were able to explore keeping more of the particular design of the ventilator, so it's nice to see that they're doing that. I think we also have questions about the document that is in the, that is, that is.
I'm sure, I can go to Valerie Campbell for more qualified.
Yes. Well, we actually have outside expert advice as well. This is Valerie Campbell on the 11th, and we represent the parish. And there are, the document that really governs the church's, parish's obligation to remove all of the sacred objects is in April 30th, 2013, agreed, that was issued by the Vatican Congregation for the Church. And that sets forth required procedures for the alienation of the church, and clearly states that sacred objects, including stained glass windows, must be removed prior to the alienation, for use in other sacred edifices or storied and enthusiastic castings. The latter is what is being proposed now. At the public hearing in June, Christabel submitted a copy of the document of the 2018 Vatican Conference on the Devising of Churches, and referenced two discussion points, where there was a suggestion that the removal of sacred objects might not be required appropriately by state legislation. However, the alienation of churches, as is required, is not governed by the Vatican Council's Conference of Church. That report, and it stays on the first page of the report, is related non-voting discussion documents intended for internal reference. The reference in the document to state legislation is also better understood with respect to churches in Europe that are actually owned by the state, which happens in, in Spain. So we have submitted, in the package that was distributed, the second letter is here, two letters that were prepared by Professor Kurt Bargans, who was a professor of Canada Law, Catholic University. And the first letter, which he obtained from his prior filing here, sets forth three requirements of Canada law with respect to removal of sacred objects. And the second discusses why the conference report that was submitted to the public hearing really has been there on the prior, that's called the public hearing. And these letters, together, make it clear that the parish has the ability to sell the church for heavy use, unless it complies with Canada law, and may lose the stained glass windows, and, 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 and.
Are there any questions? Any questions on the stained glass or other aspects of the proposal?
We also have, the one thing that's here for the parish, to just do a little bit about, versus, who's the church, or, the fact that they have the use of the church and want to, so.
Is anyone? Is there any? So if there are no questions, we can motion this, the proceedings are settled. Discussion. We agree with the work, please, and I'd say there's two areas that we've opened up last time. Whether that, there's more ways to feed more of the stained glass, the ventilators seem like, not really as flexible, because while they were being treated in the previous proposal, that's one piece apart, and there's sashers above that. You know, but it seems that, and, 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 And further explanation of that.
Yeah, that was the one we suggested that we need to figure out resolution. You know, at the last hearing, the, it was impossible for us to comply, figure out which one of these two documents actually controlled. And I think they addressed the sources of the two documents and clarify what the, what Canada law actually is. I am not, generally, actually, I'm one of those commissioners who says, I feel when it comes to someone wanting to remove their iconography that they want to live in, but it's a form of view that opposes that, because it's a private choice. Here, it is, as we've seen, part of, part of the Canada law, if they're going to mainly name this property. So we essentially have two choices. So we can help and prevent them from burying their own property, or we can allow them to comply with their, with their usual, uh, they wish they, uh, mind their work.
Other comments?
I think that, I guess, I'm not convinced that the presence of, of Mr. and Mrs. Jones is a donor to the window is necessarily the material. That's not my decision to make, but it certainly is my understanding that Mr. and Mrs. Jones bought it. They had that lie to a panel that was pre-made in most cases, sometimes not, but usually yes. And that since the applicant is going to the trouble of swapping out a few places, some panes, that this should be the case of ease as well. And if they have the chip or the stat, see if the text can be removed or panel, individual panels, it's swapped out within the letter light. And I also, last time expressed concern that I recall a case where we allowed the applicant to remove historical material, place it with a stopgap temporary, irrelevant means of special material that could remain in place. I mean, this is being done not for a particular use, let's remember, this is being done in advance of a sale that may or may not occur tomorrow, in ten years. So these plexiglass placeholders may be here for a period of time that greatly exceeds their natural lives. But that's not how they made the pictures. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about our permitting the installation of relatively, relatively flimsy products that, we don't know how long they're going to last, we don't know anything about that. You know, probably now, another user could come in there and want to say, you know what, I'm good with those plexiglass windows, but not, not with them. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable with that. I can't remember a case where you.
I think there was a review of one church where they, the rose windows extremely deteriorated and they.
They put plexiglass on top of it, that's protection, you know?
They removed, took the restoration, but they did not have the cost for the actual restoration and we approved moving it, storing it, and doing the plexiglass for a period of ten years.
I remember that church in Brooklyn, uh, Manhattan, Brooklyn.
Perhaps, this could be a term as well, I mean, I'm certainly not a disability type, I do.
Say five, can we do that, and review the condition?
Five years.
For an ECA, national, municipal, thank you. I don't know that five years is too short.
Not for plexiglass.
Fishtail.
Yeah, applicants have offered that they would install builder's glass instead of the plexiglass, that is some of those concerns. As a preference over having a limited term for it being installed.
Okay, so, so I think we can do a motion to approve the application with the modification that we use both these glasses, instead of plexiglass, and then to use for the.
I was just, we want us to make clear that even builder's glass, this is, this is understood as a solution that only lasts up until there is a tendency in the, in the space and that it is a stopgap measure because it doesn't have the kind of articulation that we expect from any windows going on to building and this stuff. So these after there is more permanent use of it, but it should not again be taken by a future tenant as part of launching.
And would that make that clear? Okay, in the matter. In the matter, it's time to, there's three nine zero two zero, forty-seventh East one hundred twenty-ninth Street, AKA two P dash fifty-two East one thirty-eighth Street and twenty forty-one dash twenty fifty-three Madison Avenue, forty-one dash forty-five East twenty-ninth Street, Church of All Saints, Roman Catholic Parish House and School, individual landmark. An Italian Gothic Revival style church complex designed by Frederick Aspernall and Russell between eighteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-four. The application is to remove special windows and iconographic masonry. I recommend approval finding that Catholic Church law requires that sacred objects, including iconographic masonry and stained glass windows, be removed through connection with the deconsecration and alienation of the church. That these sacred objects will be carefully removed and stored by the dioceses for possible reuse at a different religious property. That before the use of this religious practice, certain stained glass windows will be retained and conceived to be icons removed and statutes are prohibited and new stained glass panes to complete the maintenance. That if any additional non-iconographic stained glass panels are identified, they will be retained or destroyed. That the applicant will work with staff to finalize the determinations on which stained glass is to be removed or retained, that the windows that will be removed in their entirety will be replaced with temporary glass in fill to be replaced by the new building members at a later date, and that the proposed work will prepare the building for adaptive reuse. Call the paper? Any opposed? It's approved with this one.
We have break for, break for lunch until our board.
Hey, everybody, we're going to move back to public hearing items for the last one of the day. It's item number eight, LPC one nine dash four zero six eight seven, application for a final report, the borough of Manhattan block twelve to seven, block four seventy-six Fifth Avenue, New York Public Library, individual interior landmark. Those are style library building designed by Carrera Hastings, a different material than the other. The application is to create and modify windows and door openings and alter admission for addition in South Court.
Dr. Neil Commissioner, Supreme Mission Preservation Staff. The object for you is the public library, which is an individual and interior landmark located on Fifth Avenue, I mean Forty and Forty Second Streets. The proposal is for alterations to a modern addition and moving to the South Court yard. Here, this was constructed and enclosed first by Commissioner Google in two thousand eight. The proposal also includes modifications to existing openings and the creation of new openings at the Southern Court Yard facade, which are newer, newer, exterior features of individual landmarks. Basically, we're from our legal office.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Iris Weintraul, and I am the Chief Operating Officer of the New York Public Library. I want to thank you for considering our proposal to create improved flow, circulation, visitor experience throughout the city towards the end. The project will continue to make our iconic library more accessible and functional for all, and help create a seamless, positive experience for researchers and all visitors. Specifically, our proposal supports the opening of our long-planned treasures exhibit, permanent display of rare items from our world-renowned research collections. The free exhibit will open up our art archives and give all of our visitors the opportunity to see manuscripts, rare books, photographs, prints, and other items, et cetera. Just this past year, we displayed on these treasures, a copy of the Declaration of Independence and Thomas Jefferson's on the menu. Nearly five thousand people attended in two days, a sign of the significant interest in crowds that we expect next year when the treasure show is scheduled to open. As we are ready at destination for research, New Yorkers and visitors from all around New York, this proposal to improve flow is critical. Additionally, as you will see, the proposal also restores the integrity of some of the building's most historic spaces, which is, of course, very important to us as stewards of this very important building. We thank the community for five for its thoughtful consideration of this proposal in the context of our overall master plan, which we shared with you and the public and appreciate its unanimous approvals. All of this work is crucial for the deserving public, New Yorkers and beyond, and now in the future. As such, we are excited about this project and greatly appreciating the time and consideration. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Lee Book on the five with your.
Good afternoon, please leave our provider of the dollar product. We have a slide deck here, but we also have on easels, boards of the plans, just for reference only, so if there are any questions, there's a little bit of a complicated puzzle here, so we're happy to refer to those as well. As you know, the location of the New York Public Library itself, an individual landmark used by Hart in Midtown by Carrera Hastings, completed in nineteen eleven. This diagram shows the exterior landmark designation red in nineteen sixty-seven and then portions in light blue that were designated interior landmarks. None of the work that we're showing today affects the interior landmark spaces, but the courts, the north and south courts, um, sorry, um, here and here are, are the exterior facades formally, so therefore they're part of the designation and we are making changes to the South Court's exterior facade proposed today. Here is the location in bright red of the South Court. Also a light paint along Forty Street, a reminder that we were with, with you a few months ago to get our March twenty nineteen successful application for the entrance off of Forty Street and the new terrace there. We did want to be mindful of the fact that we're coming back to you a second time, a separate set of work, which is part of this larger master plan that we're doing in New York Public Library. In terms of what's coming down the way, it would be helpful for us to let you know that, that we really don't have anything else coming down the way in the near future, but we do want to make you aware of the fact that potentially in the future future, on the northwest corner of the building, up here, there's a room called Remedy Court, it's where the children's library is now. The children's library is going to be moved into the Manhattan Library, it opens next year. We think that sometime in the future, there may be a desire to increase the address for occupancy reasons out of that room, which is a fairly big room, and that we would propose at that time to make a pair of windows into doors that would match an existing pair on the other side on that facade. This is something that was actually brought to landmarks during the Central Library Plan about five years ago or so, but we are not coming to you with it now. We do not know whether we want to do it, we can take negotiation with Brian Hart himself, and so we don't feel prepared to know that there is any timeline for it, but we just want to let you know it's out there. So this is a section cutting through the building, looking back towards the avenue we highlighted here, South Court. We should say that South Court is actually starts at what we call the ground level, which is Forty Street level, because it was a carriage entry to the building, and I'll show you some photographs of that. Here's the elevations of South Court unfolded, so starting from the north facing uptown. This is the north elevation, we are proposing to make a change there, which I will show you. The north elevation actually faces up to some of the grander spaces in the building, including Gossmane Hall on the first floor, and then the build last room up on the top floor, you can see that the monumentality, the windows reflect that. By contrast, the east and south elevations, we are making changes to the east elevation, but east and south face onto what is the, a double loaded corridor, basically a series of rooms off of the double loaded corridor on those floors that are more, I would call them service spaces, they're offices essentially in small, small spaces. And then to the west, you can face west of the South Court, that's actually the stacks elevation, so the stacks are in that far along the west side of the building. So here's some photographs, you can get a construction on left, and then I think the best one here is the nineteen thirty-seven, where you can actually see there was this fountain here, and that was a carriage turnaround, and it was actually always a service entrance, those carriages were over ready, most, and, and out. And then here it is in two thousand with a few accretions on it, and it was really using, used for loading essentially before the application in about nineteen ninety-eight to do an infill project, which I can tell you about now, which is what Davis Rodevong came here, this was completed in two thousand two, we called this the South Court Edition, and basically it was a very clever and elegant way to get more program space into the library without impacting a lot of the interior spaces. And what it did is it actually enclosed the loading dock, so the ground floor carriage entrance is not seen by the public, and the actual start of the South Court Edition started at the first floor, which is the Astor Hall level, and then has three floors up above it of office space essentially, open office space. And then at the first floor, you could also go down a series of stairs bypassing the loading dock level to get down to the cellar, which never had any public space, and then created what was called the Celeste Auditorium. So there was this programmatic connection between the first floor, which was basically an education center, classrooms and a small orientation theater, down to the auditorium at the cellar level, and that's why that stair dropped from the first floor down to the cellar level. It programmatically was successful for the many years that it was there, but we are facing pressures to make changes programmatically and functionally to the building, and that's what our focus is today. Another elegant architectural aspect of this edition is that it tried not to touch the walls of South Court, and that's something that we want to honor as well, you'll see, and we basically picked up on the spirit of what Davis Rodevong was doing in order to make our interventions as well. So this is the proposed ground court plan and first court plan of the entire building, because we want to be useful, just to give you some context of why we're doing what we're doing. The previous application was for the terrace entrance that leads us to this light blue area, which is a new, what we call the new South Court of the building. It's a very large building that only has one set of elevators here on the north side. So really, the master plan decided that that South Court stairs and elevators is really going to help with functionality and wayfinding and circulation and improve flow of the building, particularly for those who are coming in from this new Forty Street entrance to the new Center for Research and Learning, which is a replacement basically for the classrooms that are going to be taken out of South Court. So the message here is to come in, have a Center for Research and Learning, anyone can use this court, public court, elevators and stairs, but the nice connections to get up to the first floor, and then to be the main gallery spaces that are off of Astor Hall, and that includes Gossmane Hall, which is not part of the interior landmark, but it is a beautiful exhibition space essentially, it has been used on and off for exhibitions and other events, but we are now creating the treasures exhibit. It has been used on and off for exhibitions and other events, but we are now creating the treasures exhibit. This is November 2020. It's going to be a permanent rotated collection of the most precious items in the collection. So that will be a permanent exhibit, and that is related, that is related to why we want to make some changes in South Court. And then what we're proposing to do in South Court itself is to take out those classrooms, which admittedly, when they were put in, is actually the densest floor of the South Court Edition. When you walked in the first floor, which is the only public floor really there besides the auditorium and cellar level, you didn't really have a sense of the South Court. You could see all of those walls. And what we're doing by putting in the library shop and cafe, removing those items in there, those elements in there, and it's actually going to free up more space and more visibility to all of those walls in the South Court. So you can see here, existing proposed, the classrooms that will go away. Existing Walkman Gallery will stay. The library shop will go away. It has a lot of spillover into this foyer outside of Astor Hall. And then there was a small copy kiosk tucked under the stairs of Astor Hall, and we're proposing to combine that with the library shop as well. So it will really also make an improvement to Astor Hall and its foyer and the entry into Gosman Hall by sort of taking out a little bit of that clutter, frankly, and adding a new gallery where the library shop is spilling out. We're going to tuck those uses right back into where the library shop front door was. So you can see on these photographs, some of the clutter that's going to go away, the overflow of the library shop that will all go away, and then out of Amy's spreads, the kiosk will also go away. So the changes that I'm going to be walking through on the two facades, the north and east facade of the South Court, are shown here in the plan. Anything that's in black arrows was work that was already done in 2002, and we just want to highlight that because really what we're doing is just continuing on a theme of what was done in 2002 as well. There are three changes. The first is on the north facade. This is to create much needed egress from the Gosman Hall treasures exhibit into South Court. This actually allows us to have an egress occupancy that is pro-coated. Everything that we're doing in the master plan is trying to bring up our egress compliance with code, which you can imagine has a lot of grandfathered existing noncompliant conditions. The second is to create a connection between this freight elevator that was put there for convenience in South Court, but always had a bit of a dissonance between the program that was in South Court and the freight elevator itself. There was no way really to service the building except going through South Court itself. So we're proposing to make an opening to connect our new South Court lobby to that freight elevator so that we can use it on the first floor. And then finally, our third change here is actually on the first mezzanine. So this is the first door above the library shop, is to create another bridge along the lines of what was created in 2002 that accesses this office suite, because our new South Court basically isolated that office suite. There'd be no way for us to get to that space, but it's part of the street, we've got the bridge. So here are some examples of how it was done in 2002. We showed this to you because the language of our doors and our openings are incredibly similar. We are accusing, instead of to put another language, another contemporary language into here, we're proposing to use the language in detailing what was done in 2002 so that there isn't too much going on of different vocabularies in this location. So you can see glasses on stores, these bridges that are done very simply with sheetrock fascia, the glass railings, and stainless steel detailing. The first door that I mentioned, which is the door from Gosman Hall, is on the north side. Here's an image of the photograph of the window that we are proposing to lower the sill to create a door. So you can see in blue where we're showing this, and I have to tell you on the next page. We're also showing here, just as a reference point, this is an existing window on the east elevation that in 2002, there was a change of the ways and took great opaque finish on it. And it's basically a mirrored film with sandblasting on it. So there's a little bit of depth from the glass, but it's essentially okay. We are required to do this first wall between Gosman Hall and South Court because we are protecting some of the greatest treasures of the library. We have to keep our candles incredibly low, and we want to keep South Court daylight. So this is the strategy that we're going to be using on the north and the east elevations, as well as portions of the south elevation. But again, not in a different language than what was done in 2002. So here's the north elevation, existing. You can see these three monumental windows into Gosman. These two minor windows, we're proposing to lower the sill of this window here to create a bronze of glass door that will have glass, but again, will be filmed over. The detailing of that door is fairly similar actually to what we showed you for the 40th Street entrance off of the new plaza. This is if we were inspired by the door that goes from Gosman Hall to the stacks proper. You can see the detailing that is prevalent in terms of the circle motif and the bronze and glass to this dark posed door design with a solid transom going between Gosman Hall and South Court. There's a section, we do have to mediate a small level change. We're proposing to do that in the threshold between Gosman Hall and South Court on the Gosman Hall side. It's very, very, it's not a ramp, it's a slope, very, very subtle, and will be done by replacing, removing and replacing existing materials. So that's the north facade. This is the changes that we're proposing on the east elevation. On the left, you can see the existing east elevation. Dotted in black are all the locations in which the 2002 South Court Edition made similar types of changes that we're proposing today in terms of lowering sills to create doors, such as this door that goes from Astor Hall foyer into South Court, or creating bridges by either removing the top half of a monumental window or lowering sills to create that as well. This is proposed, showing the locations where we're doing that. This is the first floor door that will lead to our new South Court. This is the first mezzanine door that will lead to that suite of offices that have been isolated basically in plan. The locations you can see here in gray, the locations where we're showing that we're just proposing that film in order to control the light coming in to set those spaces. So this is just showing us if I've just walked into South Court. I've looked left. This is sort of hard to see, but this is the location where we're proposing on the first floor to make that entrance change, and I'll show you that to connect the freight elevator to our South Court. And then also, of course, doesn't need to create a bridge similar to the other bridges from South Court to the office suite. This is the first floor. At the first floor, we're connecting the freight elevator to the floor. You can see that we'll lower the sill here. We're going to make our returns to the stone and fill that to match the existing adjacent. We have translucent glass on stores that will match the existing meaning, the nonhistoric existing from the 2002 edition. And then an opaque glass transom up at the top by the something that's required behind it. And then up the first floor mezzanine, again, the removal of this window to create a door. The door style essentially identical to the 2002 design with a glass guardrail and a metal can rail, and then the door here in this location to get to the mezzanine. So the final change that we're going to talk about is providing access to the auditorium down at the cellar level. We just call it the Celeste Auditorium. And the 1998's application to you, which was built in 2002, as I said, chose to have the access to that auditorium from the first floor plan because at that time programmatically it made sense because the classrooms were in this location, and they could just go down, and also those who needed an elevator could use this freight elevator. So essentially, there is no separation now between freight and passengers going down that elevator. We wanted to make an improvement to that in terms of wayfinding and also the programmatic connection between the Center for Research and Learning and that auditorium. So what we're proposing to do is actually to remove this stair and replace it in a new route. It's a little bit complex, so I have a series of slides to show you how it works. But when we extend that flooring, the marble flooring, it will be the same detail that is everywhere else from the 1998 application. It's the same connection down to the marble base that's here. A reminder that this is at the first floor. This is not at the ground floor where this door had prepared entrance is. So while this stair provided the somewhat interesting and unusual view to go up to the sky, like you need to be able to see the carriage entrance, down to the cellar where you could see the rubble wall that is the foundation, which is actually reconsolidated material from the historic reservoir. It's not the reservoir of all of the cells, but it's the foundation. That was actually a view that was never seen historically in the building because that cellar was never exposed to anyone. It was just a private space. So it's an unusual stratification. You can see the architectural layers, but it's a bit of a conceit because it never existed historically. And we are still proposing to keep that view of the foundations. People are interested in it. You won't be able to see it as you make your way down. We're just choosing it in a group to show you now. So what we're proposing to do is on the ground floor plan here, this is our 40th Street entrance, rather than people to go to the auditorium, they would have to climb the steps on Fifth Avenue, go into South Court, and then go back down from first to ground to cellar. We're proposing a ground level entrance that goes into this public lobby here that has the elevators and the stairs. If you want to take the stairs, you go straight through, and you have a straight run from the ground floor down to the cellar. If you want to take the elevator, you can take the elevator here. So two-sided elevator that at the cellar level will let you out on the north side, and then you can come out into the existing Celeste Auditorium pre-functioning space. So that's the way it works functionally. Here's a little axon metric to show you. These are the four slabs. So this is the auditorium level, which is the cellar, the ground floor, which is the loading dock, and then the first floor, which is our proposed shop, and then the offices up above. And this is the way that the 1998 application did it, was from the first floor and just went in this way down to the cellar level. Here's an assumed in axon back. It's a glass stair with metal perforated risers. So you can see it's coming from the bridge from Astor Hall, and then you come down and down into the cellar. What our proposal is, is instead of starting from the first floor, we'd like to start from the ground floor and make a straight shot all the way down, exposing, keeping that foundation wall exposed, so you'll be seeing it as you go down to the right. And that our stair would be largely in the spirit of that stair detailing as well. The only change we would like to make is to make the treads instead of glass, we'd like to make them into marble. The glass hasn't really worn very well, and the libraries will feel more comfortable with us using a stone, which will be sympathetic contemporary stone detailing that was done in 2002. So here's our proposed stair as it comes its way down from the entrance or the lobby, and then a landing, generous landing here, and then another set of stairs that lands exactly where the 2002 edition had a run as well. So here, really, both are in session as well. You can see that actually when the 2002 construction actually created a slab here in the first floor where there wasn't one floor, it affects a lot of window openings. And what we're trying to do is to actually make it a little bit more consistent. We are extending this slab out so there's no longer an opening that allows this stair down, which requires us to do essentially the same thing that was done in 2002, which is to modify these openings. Now, the last time around, those openings were modified by sheetrock softens here, and then there are no windows that exist there back there that we found in frames, but the windows are no longer there. What we're proposing to do is to keep the sheetrock, propose it over, but to replicate the historic grills that are there, to create these grills in front of those sheetrock openings for a little bit of visual interest as you're walking down the stairs, and to replace the sheetrock features here with marble. We just feel like it's a little bit more common and durable. So here's the details of that. So this is an existing ground floor window without the grill. I would like to improve it by again, making the marble fascia, the grill that's replicated from the historic grills here, like that. So you'll see one depth here and then one here, and this is in the section. It'll have a little cove here as well so the ceiling drops below you just to have the full masonry opening of the historic window. This is a view actually in the loading dock. So you can see up here on the top right. If you plan this, you enter the loading dock. You come into the little vestibule where the freight elevator is, and this opening here is the opening that will come from our new South Court. It will become a door where you just come straight through and down into the Celeste Auditorium with the big wall dock so you do not see the loading dock. And you have to be aware that the loading dock is there. So this is a photo of that opening. We lower that sill. We create another door again in the same style from 2002 application. We infill where we expose stone here. We fill it with matching stone, and then you come out to the stair landing and go straight down with a set of stairs. In order to have access from our new elevators to the Celeste Auditorium pre-function area, we need to make an opening through the cellar walls, the foundation walls. You can see those walls here. So you can see that the solution in 2002 was to put this highly polished dandian marble, which was actually the same type of marble, species of marble that is on a lot of the walls of the building, but they chose to make a contemporary interpretation of that. And so what we're proposing to do is to actually cut an opening through that marble weight stuff, through the foundation, to create an opening into the new elevator lobby. The way that we're choosing to detail that is that the initial portal that cuts through the 2002 work is in a polished dandian marble to match what was there. But once you walk through that, through the foundation wall and into our new elevator lobby, we're actually proposing to do that in a phone and be marble ashlar cladding, which is the way that we're making repairs and new spaces in a lot of spaces in the building where you feel like it's more sympathetic to the existing building. So you're going from a new intervention into a more historic space.
Ms., can you go back to the axon for a moment? At the ground floor and the first floor right now, those go all the way through the walls with the exception of the cutout for the stair.
Correct.
And then in the first floor mezzanine, the second floor and third floor is where it pulls in.
Correct.
Are there other questions?
Yes. The new two elevators, again, what? You refer to the existing elevator in the courtyard as being a service elevator, and the new ones as being a passage elevator. Now that you've got the new passage elevator, what purpose does it, does the older elevator serve?
The older elevator is actually the only elevator that goes down from the loading dock. So it's actually a great service elevator use for them so that when they're unloading in any materials, it's going to come from that.
And your new elevators would have to that level?
We would have to make a connection through that wall to get to it. And we also feel like having that existing elevator there does serve a function, and we like the idea of being able to make the separation between using that for goods as compared to the public.
And the second question is, the request to change the floor at the first floor, is there a functional use of it for the addition of that floor area? Or is it just because you're taking the stair out, you just assume you have it and not?
I think it's a little bit of both. So I think our first instinct in terms of taking out the stair was actually from a master plan circulation one where we felt like it was a fairly circuitous way to get down to the Celeste Auditorium. So once we took the stair out, I suppose we could have just cut that opening. But honestly, to have the space as part of the library shop and cafe, it's a nice open space that we just felt like we could certainly use it.
True.
Do you consider doing it as an infill at the last as opposed to marble to allow that to be used?
We didn't. We, I'm sure we could. What we're planning is that that's a bit of a seating area right now, but I'm sure, you know, just like we can do that with other sites, if you can see a window through to see this down there. Sure, we can come to that.
Other questions? And if you take the test, go away and contact. Fatima Afia.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Fatima Afia. I'm the associate at Florida P C. We represent community to save the New York Public Library and citizens' defending libraries, organizations dedicated to the cause of protecting New York City's cherished libraries, including in particular the New York Public Library of 476, Fifth Avenue, Manhattan. We oppose the New York Public Library's application for real efficiency. The application for the court today proposes work to be performed on the building itself, including and on limited to the conversion of certain court air windows and the reconfiguration of the gates to the service court on 40th Street. However, this work constitutes just one portion of the applicant's master plan, a $317 million project to re-enact large segments of the building's interiors and exteriors, most of the plans for which have not been disclosed to the public to date. Indeed, in order to effectuate the reconfiguration of the gates to the court on 40th Street, the applicant has the applicant has to perform a major exterior work on the public sidewalk adjacent to the building on Fourth Street, including the removal of longstanding and stored blue stone sidewalk panels, the installation of a wider ramp, and the installation of curb decks. This exterior sidewalk portion of the applicant's master plan is therefore directly related to and interconnected with the interior work being proposed today, insofar as the work on the sidewalk must be completed before the interior work we are discussing today can be performed. And yet, despite the interdependent nature of these two portions of the master plan, the applicant has chosen to seek approval of its project from this board in piecemeal fashion and has not included the sidewalk, sidewalk work in its application today. The reason for this is obvious. The applicant claims the work proposed today will be privately funded, a claim which we can neither deny nor verify without access to the applicant's whole master plan. But the sidewalk work is being funded by the Federal Highway Administration, as demonstrated in the applicant's own materials. Consequently, the sidewalk work, if considered together with the work proposed today, would trigger review of the entire application by the State Historic Preservation Office, also known as SHIPO. Yesterday, we sent a letter to SHIPO informing them of this situation. The L P C was provided a copy of this letter yesterday as well. SHIPO responded that they already reviewed the sidewalk work, but that did not review the remainder of the master plan, including the work proposed today. Thus, the applicant has improperly segmented the project in an effort to avoid today's application reviewed, having today's application reviewed by SHIPO, which requires a comprehensive notice, comment, and consultation process. The New York Public Library cannot be permitted to unlawfully circumvent SHIPO's comprehensive review process when its project stands to alter or potentially damage precious historic artifacts and features of one of the world's most treasured libraries.
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Is there one final sentence you want to say?
Yes, I would just like to say that as the board, being recalled in 2011, essential library plan proposed by the applicant had sought to divest the library of many of its world-renowned stacks and historic research properties. We had represented Citizens Defending Libraries at that time, and one of the arguments we had made in opposing that plan was the same thing that's happening here, which is that the library had sought to cut out SHIPO in the process. We begin again now, we believe that that segmentation is possibly violation of law. We ask that the L P C hold over this matter to another hearing before taking a vote.
Okay. Do you have other comments?
My testimony has illustrations and had that as customary, and commissioners can share with take one and pass it down. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I am pleased with your role. I am vice president of the Committee to Save the New York Public Library, a volunteer organization formed in 2012, a whole central library plan. We, I'm going to divide my testimony in three parts quickly. First, I'm referring to the proposed first floor infill. When the New York Public Library went before the commission in 2001 to obtain approvals for the Davis Roading Bond South Court insertion, the record will show that much was made at the time of the historic preservation objective of pulling the new structure away from the Carrer Hastings exterior walls of the South Court to afford the visitor a sense of the court's original scale, materiality, and grandeur. Only the entry note and stair displays the full height of the court, including its underlying foundation wall. In the New York Public Library's application before it today, the proposed first floor infill of the existing entry note and stair defeats this commission's 2001 historic preservation and aesthetic objectives and should be denied. Second portion, pending, regarding the pending landmark preservation request for evaluation of the New York Public Library interiors. Now universally regarded as foolish, in 2012, the New York Public Library embarked on central library plan with broad political support. This plan, halted by our organization's successful lawsuit, would have demolished the stacks, replaced the Mid Manhattan Library with luxury condos, and relocated Mid Manhattan Circulated Collection to the site of the destroyed stacks. At that time, a request for evaluation of 13 of Carrer Hastings' interiors was submitted to the Landmarks Preservation Commission. See attachment. Five years later, in 2017, the commission designated only two, the Rose Reading Room and the Build Last catalog link. Eleven of the most important Bozar interior spaces in the world remain still unprotected and vulnerable to the latest iteration of the New York Public Library's faddish and secretive schemes. It is truly a shocking heritage of duty that the L P C has not, seven years later, established essential public oversight over the library's extensive interior alterations to its remaining unlandmarked interiors, which are now beginning to be engulfed in repeated waves of segmented applications. Each one comes as a surprise, because the New York Public Library refuses to release its plans in full, despite their repeated and increasingly hollow promises to do so. Finally, regarding the segmentation issue, council has addressed that in greater detail in my room, and I would like to say this. We have, as a result of our Freedom of Information Act request, SHIPO has provided the documents for the sidewalk project. The New York Public Library segmented this project into publicly and privately funded components to avoid regulatory scrutiny that this project ought to face. If the two aspects of this one project, if the multiple rather aspects of this project were presented as the single project that it actually is, it would be clear that public money is being used, and a review of the whole master plan by SHIPO should be triggered. Review ought to encompass the whole so-called master plan. This building is one of the most important and magnificent landmarks in our city, state, country, and in fact, the world, deserving most careful scrutiny and protection afforded by our laws. Thank you.
Andrea Goldman.
Good day, Chair Carolyn Mitchens. I'm Andrea Goldman, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy's public policy committee has seen the briefing on this proposal in court in the site. The committee supports this application to create and modify window and door openings and alter commission approved edition from in the South Court at the New York Public Library. This sensitive proposal reflects both the historic Carrer Hastings design and the Davis Roading Bond plan from 2002, which involved the courtyard. With a series of subtle alterations, it will ease access to the South Court and facilitate more usage of this inn gate of space. The proposal will increase some window openings and insert doors that reflect historic and contemporary existing doors. A new staircase will simplify egress and minimal treatment. Overall, the plan shows great respect toward the New York's most magnificent landmarks. On the business of South Court, many committee members noticed the poor condition of some areas of marble in New York facades, and request that the N Y P L prioritize cleaning and repairing these facades, which of course, are part of the landmark exterior. We thank the public library for its sense of public engagement and the architects for this thorough proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we have a resolution from the House Committee of the Board five, recommending that we vote for the first. Do you want to respond to some of the comments?
Sure, I'm happy to do so. Speaking on behalf of the library, correct me if I may, but there is no SHIPO jurisdiction for the work that we are doing. We do not have environmental review for the work that we are doing. SHIPO is clear about that with my client, so, and that the sidewalk replacement is on property that is, I believe, a city-owned property that is not under N Y P L's jurisdiction, separate sidewalk replacement project.
And to be done by, to be done by the U C.
Using federal funds. And will be brought before the House of Representatives September, uh, D O T and U C.
Any other questions from the team? Is there some motion for closing hearing? Is that in all favor?
Aye.
It's a complicated space. If you've been there, you can probably understand it, but nothing is not, you know, I think that this, well, doing such a certification kind of strange layer, that is, you know, basically, there's some doors and bridges that were, that are, similar in version of the U C, and then filling in this wide opening on the ground floor to match the rest of the floor. Who would like to start this?
All right. I gotta say that I'm not a huge fan of what's being proposed. And I have to say it, because when I try to look at this from, I'm stepping back and I look at it from macro point of view, what I see is, oh, we have four protected facades of this space that over time have been significantly modified in such a way that had they been visible facades in a clear sense, you know, if there had been no addition at the center, one would be quite disturbed by many of the asymmetries and variations that produce such a highly designed set of facades. And I think that this application, well, not private still, uh, the, the thing is there, but I think that, for me anyway, I mean, when evaluating the appropriateness of modifications, I try to keep in mind the overall intent of the initial design, and to see whether the, the modifications proposed maintain, support, or deplete that initial design intent, rare case in design intent. It's very clear that the rare case in design intent was that these facades are visible design facades. They are symmetrical, they are organized, they're decorated. So, as was said in testimony, the entire, or, you know, much of the basis for approving this very significant intervention in the building was that it basically left the envelope on. That didn't actually leave the envelope on. It messed with it a little bit, but it, it tried to preserve use of the external facades from the trays that it inserted into the quarter. I think that this chips away further at that rehating by defilling the floor at the first floor. I think it does a good thing by opening it up on the first floor, so that you can actually see more of the exterior facades from the first floor. I think that's a great thing, but I think that the, that the, the proposed changes make it worse without making it better in any offsetting way. So I don't think that any one thing is necessarily the end of the world, but I think as a, taken as a brutality, the taking of the number of windows and doors, the addition of bridges, the addition of floor space up against the wall, the exterior, old exterior walls, all make what I think is a compromising situation for us. So I would hope that the applicants can figure out ways to do what they need to do while they can get it better. I think that they can look at a few things. First of all, I think they can, they don't need to make that, fill in that floor with the stairwells. Where you got the door connection there, you've got a major, at the main entrance to this space, you have a significant view of several levels of the, of the existing building. I think that the taking that away is needless. I don't see, I don't see what it adds to the landmark parking function aspect, so I don't think that it adds anything to the experience of the landmark at all. And it does take away something. I think that when you're looking at the openings that are being modified, one has to look at them as if there's no addition there, right? And if there was symmetry, symmetry should endeavor to be maintained. If, you know, yes, it's a, it's already a mess, but I don't think that we should be improving things that make a mess worse. I think that it also can be looked at in form of the doors, maybe they don't have to be contemporary doors, and maybe they seem a few closer to the original penetration pattern and be more restorative as opposed to pulling the building further away from its original intent. I think that the stair going from the ground level to the basement to the cellar could, instead of holding fast to the existing wall, put it up on the other wall. I don't see, I mean, I think, I don't have studied depth, but it looks to me like to do that. And I think, you know, if it took the guiding principles of the, of the modifications were, we're making it better, or we're at least not making it worse, I think that the proposal would look different than it does. And I think that it could look different without significantly impacting their programmatic modifications. I also want to suggest that, that if you're going to the extent of plowing in the money for those two elevators, maybe you can eliminate the service elevator and thus increase the amount of visibility that the public has of the courtyardness of that space by opening it up more.
Any others? Wait, someone here, and you want to add?
Well, I think that, that, I consider the success of the Davis Roading Convention is, is the fact that it keeps, any other questions of the work? I'm going right from the exterior, I'm wanting to revisit the stash, I want to, to the building entrance, to the wall again.
Turn down the lights a little bit.
So, I agree personally with Michael in that, in fact, that the new work is taking away some of the, the better, better aspects of the work that was done, I think, and I think, I think that the connection, it seems very logical when you stand that the, that the building needs to, this guy's programming, and it really needs to have more accessibility in the elevators. So I think that any dimension within the court itself needs to move away from that, that wall, so that the new stair is in that same location as you, and that's just if it is further attached to the elevator now, than not to the exterior wall, and it retains that, that view, that you probably haven't, you know, that is a view you never saw, it's a view we have now, that is, it's very important, it tells the story of the evolution of the building, and I think it's important.
Others?
No, I think, I think there's a lot of good points made here. I think that these are exterior facades, and they are design facades, and I think that got about in the original scheme, and the new scheme was done sensibly, albeit making sub-changes. But the one thing I do think is that, is even though they're designed symmetrical and have a design intention organized, I do think they go in courtyard facades, a little bit of that of street corner facades. And I think that with the Davis Roading Bond commission approved edition, we don't experience them in the same way. So I don't know that you necessarily experience that symmetry today, and so I feel less uncomfortable about the doors and bridges being introduced in an asymmetrical way, so long as the number is lived and the detailing is thoughtful. And, you know, I think, well, I could do something with some of the more historic thing, or just think of the vocabulary, and maybe explore the diamond dimensions, and I think I should open the ether way on that. And I think there have been some good suggestions about this how to, now they have that stair opening, which is, in my mind, kind of the largest intervention here in terms of the original, and, and, for the intent of the Davis Roading Bond.
So I think we've had some comments today, and I think that it would help the project, we would think a little bit more about some of the comments that we've heard, and think about some of the findings that could, if not enhance the space, or rationalize some of the interventions in the conversation. So, if you'll think about that, we won't take an action today, I hope you're in touch. I hope you're ready to answer.
Just, first of all, we share as a, I can term it considered progress and loss. That's considered landmark, right? And the second thing I was gonna say is, I think that, I understand why we're sticking with the Davis-Brody approach to everything. I think that one area where they could explore modifying it is these connections, the bridges that connect. I think we can, these days, do a lot slimmer, better connections. And some of those connections did actually obscure visibility of highly detailed elements of the existing facade. So to the extent that they are exploring things as you suggest, they might be able to design and structure in detail of the bridges of existing to try to.
Great. Okay. So we'll have you contribute a word to Karenah and Cory and David, and we'll have you back in soon, if you're ready. Thank you. So take a motion for closing hearing. And then, great. Thank you, Ralph.